You were being helpful over there.
My fault.
But of course, of course we need holding things up.
All right.
Hey, I did have one about that.
Good afternoon, everyone. I call the Marlington Local School District Board of Education Emergency Special Meeting to Order on Friday, September 3, 2021 at 5:03 PM. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Dr. Main, would you please call the role?
Mrs. Gabriel?
Here.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Mish?
Here.
Adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion that the Marlington Local Board of Education adopt the following agenda for the emergency special meeting, September 3, 2021?
So moved.
Second. Is there any additions or corrections? Any discussion? Please call the role.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Mish?
Yes.
Approved, five zero.
Under new business, we have building projects listed first and we have Will Litwin here from Plug Smart, he's here in person, and then we have Scott Brennan and Dave on the phone. Apologize that I don't know Dave's last name.
It's Al.
And at this point, I think I'll turn it over to Will and he can go back and forth if we need to hear from Scott or Dave. And I guess what would, the board and the community would like to hear is just the timeline of events through the Washington project and the Lexington project and the events that got us through to where we are today, and if you could go over what needs done and your projected timeline of that, if you could just...
Does he need a microphone?
Well, if you say, actually for that level of detail, I'll probably...
Yeah, for that, for those specific questions, I'll defer to Scott, who is on the call, who can kind of give you a rundown of where we're at, at each building and work that's remaining and go from there. So Scott, I'll kick it over to you.
Did you hear that, Scott?
Scott?
I'm here, yes. So would you like me to start with the timeline of what's remaining or what's the order that you would like me to come specifically?
Do you have a preference?
I think the community and the board is interested in knowing, you know, the timeline with, you know, what's led up to, you know, the project getting a little bit behind.
Well, as far as that one goes, I think I can answer, the project is not behind. So the contractual date is October 10th for substantial completion at the buildings. Certainly, I know all of our goal was to get ahead of schedule and be done before the start of school, but ultimately, due to a variety of factors, including some supply chain risk that we ran into with raw material availability on adhesives for the roof, as well as rain delays. And a lot of rain that we got in July and August caused us to miss the goal of finishing ahead of schedule. But with that, I can kind of, Scott, if you want to cut in there and let me know and kind of give the board an update of, again, where we're at.
Okay, so where we're at now is we are, we will start first with Washington. The Washington roof is under full roof and the edge out trim out is complete for some final, you know, I'm going to say punch items to do on the decorative edging that goes around, but for the most part, the roof is done at Washington. With Washington, we are going to be cutting over the power. They are bringing in the pole on Tuesday for the new utilities. The trenching and core drilling are done and complete and have been, as special was done yesterday, as well as we are covered and it's the dry whiz, you know, you can drive on the driveway now at this time. All roping and fencing are out of there. We've decommissioned or demobilized the dumpsters that are there. So the remaining work that we have at Washington is the electrical power cutover and then the startup of the HVAC equipment. The HVAC equipment is installed. The refrigerant has been charged. We have some final electrical tie-ins to do on the rooftop unit and we have our electricians working. They'll have a crew there tomorrow as well, today and tomorrow they've been there. And then once that's completed, we switch over the powers when we'll be able to do the commissioning and startup of the units and turn the building over to the district for heating and cooling. Questions on Washington?
That's where our update was from the other day. It sounds like we got a little farther. Are they running one crew or two crews there? Just the one?
Did you hear that question?
For electrical? I heard about crew, but I'm not sure for which trade you're asking about.
Over, well, are we running one crew or two crew at Washington to get up to speed and get everything almost done for ready for...
He asked on which, which section of the electrical?
Are you talking?
In general, are we running one on the HVAC or, and we're running one on the electrical? I know we're waiting for Ohio Edison, but is it, like we talked about, is there two crews or just the one?
So the electrical is the part that they are running multiple people, multiple teams. They are running a few crews on Saturday. I would say that at max, it's going to be two crews.
Okay.
And then they were, they will be back the remaining part of the week to wrap up, to work with Ohio Edison and maybe part of the pole installation. Once Ohio Edison gives us a confirmed date for switch over, then we will have, we'll have the mechanical installer crews back to do, to do the commission and startup. So we are, we are manned from a crew standpoint, we are manned to the, to the point of being able to complete what we can until we switch over to Ohio Edison.
Does anyone have additional questions on Washington? Okay, I think that's good. And Washington, and if you want to give us the update on Lexington as to what has been done and what...
Sure. So at Lexington, we have installed, we have worked our, we started with all, at old schools, we started working from the classrooms out so that we could allow for the district to, you know, get in and do your work as soon as possible, you know, with the cleaning, the floors, et cetera. So at Lexington, all of the work from within the side of the classrooms, from a standpoint of hanging the mechanical equipment and the electrical terminations and connections to the HVAC equipment have been complete. This weekend, they are also working on running and finalizing the communication connections or wires for the thermostat. We also completed the curb installation and structural reinforcement as of today for all three rooftop units. From a roofing standpoint, they are, they have completed the gym decking as well as roofing. The gym decking had significant damage all the way through, so we had to replace the metal decking. And then we have, we finished the, I'm going to say the portion of the roof that's towards the back lot, working its way to the cafeteria. The cafeteria was started today with, again, the roof penetration and curbs being in place, and they're now working down towards the, they're working towards the middle of the school. We have multiple crews that's working there. We have one that's working at the cafeteria side and then another crew that's starting to work on the, it's basically the pump out of the school. You know, we have a few classrooms, then they're going to meet in the middle and then continue to the end. From a mechanical standpoint, the roofing is on the roof, so as the roofers are progressing with the roof installation, we will be setting, you know, the condensing units and running the gas lines and electrical lines. The rooftop units are going to be set next week. The boring for the service utilities and concrete padwork is also going to be done next week. They are going to be working on that next week. And similarly, correct, when I say done, they're starting to work on that next week. They do not see any reason why it will not be completed unless weather prohibits them. And once again, with Lexington, we are ready for final confirmation from Ohio Edison as to when they will be able to do switch over.
As far as the roof, if there's no rain, how many, what's your projected completion date if the weather cooperates?
We have a free, starting from today, we have a three-week goal. So our goal is to be done the third week of September. And to your point, that that's bearing any weather, all supplies and materials are on hand that we need at this point in time.
And then as far as Ohio Edison, you're waiting on the switch over or the final confirmation from them? I mean, what, can you even guess as to that timeline?
I can't guess at the timeline right now. I'm waiting for, there'll be confirmation from them.
Okay.
Now, I will say what we plan for Washington, and they are very aware of it, is that Washington cannot cutover during a school day, that we will have to do it on a Saturday. So that's already established.
Okay.
And then with Lexington, you know, in our current status, the district will still be informed. We are going to be working as fast as possible with Edison to get that switch over done.
Okay, questions from the board on Lexington?
I mean, we were at the Plug Smart meeting that they had. It sounds like they're getting somewhere farther. So, I mean, we're moving in the right direction compared to what we had stated the other day on a Wednesday. So it sounds like things are going, any adhesives are here? Like we talked about, the things that we're lacking or what's going on with that, Will?
Yeah, the adhesives were the delay we had at Lexington. Those adhesives did not show up until, again, one of the supply chain holdups, but those showed up in July, finally. So we do have all the adhesives we need. Everything we need is here on site. It's just a matter of not getting rainy days.
Right.
Getting a couple of dry weeks, hopefully.
Yep. So I know, I don't think this is a Plug Smart question. This is probably Dr. Mike's question. What's the asbestos status at Lexington?
So at Lexington, I want to make sure everybody understands, you know, the building has asbestos. That's been documented and I've talked about that many times. So what happened, I don't know if you want me to go into this piece of it, but when the roof, the ceiling inside, when it caves in or cracks, then that asbestos has to be abated. And what happened on Wednesday was we were debating, should we open the building or not, and then 500 square feet of the ceiling started to cave in and obviously needed abated. You can't open the building like that. So that was a safety concern. So we had just finished that day or maybe the day before, another abatement where another piece of the ceiling had caved in. And so by law and, you know, anything else, keep kids safe, you have to abate the asbestos that's in the building and that, that should be common sense. Any building before, I think 78, we're pretty sure has asbestos. And I had Al pull the, all the documentation of what we have there. So I have that. So the, I want to make sure too that everybody understands, doing the roof does not guarantee that the ceiling is not going to cave in or come down or crack or whatever. The roof, I think it's like they're like, maybe think of it as they're kissing cousins. Of course, when you're pounding on the roof in that vibration, you have much, much more of a chance for part of the roof, part of the ceiling inside to crack. But it's, I know at the end of Mr. Knowles' time here, a classroom, some of the ceiling came down, and I know since I've been here, some of the office ceiling came down and no one was on the roof. So does that kind of answer your question, Dr. Mason?
Yeah, what, I mean, if, if it's falling down piece by piece, how long till it falls down on kids?
So there's, so there's absolutely no way to know that. And if the board will remember, I had asked the board to consider taking a larger lease purchase and abating at Lexington while we were doing the project and then fixing some, what I'm calling structural things at Washington. So I did mention that to the board, talk to the board about that. Now, my recommendation to you, if you're going to keep that building, is you should start a fund and a plan to abate every summer or every Christmas till the building's abated because that way it's, you know, it's done. And I, and I'll let you know too, I have a little bit of experience with this. If it would someday, in the history, and not the history, in the foreword of Marlington local schools, there would be a chance if you tear that building down, you still have to abate the asbestos. So it might end up, I don't think it's a bad thing to do. It might end up Marlington's responsibility anyway. So there's, there's absolutely no guarantees when you're working with that, a building of that age.
I just wanted to point out one thing worth mentioning from a construction standpoint. With the older buildings and the ceilings, some of the contributing factors can be, you know, leaks from the roof. Another factor is humidity. When you don't condition the space, especially in the heating or the cooling season, you have a lot of humidity that seeps into the structure. And then in the winter season, it gets sucked back out and that causes expansion and contraction, which loosens materials and contributes towards those types of issues.
I would completely agree with that. So I, you know, the roofing, doing the roof, you know, climate control, better climate, you know, should help, but I just want everybody to understand, I'm not going to guarantee to you that
No.
parts of that, those ceilings will not fall.
So over the years, if, for example, the roof hadn't been repaired and there was a leak, that can contribute then to the ceiling becoming loose? Is that what you're saying?
That's what Josh was saying, and that makes sense to me.
Well, that, that and the humidity.
And those buildings haven't had air conditioner or anything for like ever. So, you know, you've got to think, they never had anything to do anything to make a difference. So that explains a lot too. A lot of circumstances went into that. It's not just, you know, them being on the roof at one time. So that makes sense.
Yeah, and I'm not so sure people, we live here in Ohio and we just take our weather, but sometimes we don't realize we have what I call extremes in weather. I mean, people ask sometimes, my buddy's an engineer in Minnesota, well, why don't you have the trouble with the roads like Ohio? Well, because they freeze and it stays freezing all winter. You know, we thaw and freeze and thaw and freeze and humid and not. And it's just a constant, you know, as the last week is borne out. So those are the things that we struggle with, you know, as far as that goes.
Well, if you could maybe just go over again, I know with the Marlboro project, you had mentioned if the asbestos was not disturbed in any way and remained encapsulated, then it's not a problem. So if you could, from a construction standpoint, just kind of explain the asbestos in the building if it doesn't become disturbed in any way?
Yeah, I guess I'll start off by saying I'm by no means asbestos expert. To be, I mean, my, my limited understanding of asbestos is as long as you're not disturbing it, it's fine. But the minute it goes airborne, it becomes extremely problematic. But I would almost have to defer to, you know, someone, a regional expert or a Bill Racine or someone that's, you know, in the county that deals with it on a regular basis. But I know enough that if there's a threat of it being asbestos, we stop what we're doing. We have it tested, checked and verified, and if needed, abated before, before we move on. But it's certainly not something that we, we again mess with. It's, you know, pretty serious, obviously, when you do have it.
Thank you.
And that, that goes into the factor that the administration made, correct, Dr. Mike?
Yeah.
Not to, not to open up the school.
Correct. So, so we were close to not opening the school Wednesday morning and then like an hour or two after our meeting, then that 500 square feet started to fall. And for safety, we just could not open that building. So it is always best to keep air on the side of caution. I know where, you know, it displaces people a little bit, but that way you're, you know that, you know, while they're pounding on the roof that, and then that way they can get it done too in the daytime.
I know in that meeting, we also discussed doing air quality. Are we going to do that after we're done doing the roof, moving things around? Are we going to check the air quality again before the kids go in?
We will.
Okay.
Yes.
Dr. Mike, could you just clarify then? The, the ceiling was noticed by the workers that were there or we scheduled an inspection or how did, how did that transpire?
So interestingly enough, the way I understand, Bill Racine is our expert, and he was there walking through the hall with Al and Serpi, our facilities guy, talking about the asbestos abatement in the kindergarten wing and saying, check it off, you're done and clear, started walking down the hall and here is almost, you could see just the crack starting. And then he said, you've got to, so that's the way, what I understood, how it was. But it's, it's very obvious. I mean, to anybody that's like me or in construction or, you know, to people that know what, you know, it's cracked and here's, that's the problem. So it's obvious.
So when is that work scheduled to be done?
I'm, I am not 100% sure.
And that...
As soon as possible.
Bill Racine would schedule that work?
As a matter of fact, did he finish? He gave us a bill, so I don't know if he finished yet or not. Bill, Bill schedules that yet to be done.
Okay. So is, is it done?
I don't know for sure.
We don't know if it's done.
Yeah.
Now, we, do we have a biannual inspection for...
By every six months, from what Al told me, yeah.
And, and in that inspection, do they do a general inspection of the ceilings?
I would imagine, and if they don't, I would make sure that from now on they do.
Yeah. I was just wondering when that next inspection is scheduled, if that's something we might want to...
Yeah, I'd have to look at that. Because I know he does those, he wants to be there when nobody's there, I'm pretty sure, and he can just move about, so.
Does the board have any questions at this point on the building projects, either Washington or Lexington? If you don't mind staying around just a bit longer in case we have additional questions that might surface.
Yes, I'll go.
Dr. Mike, if you want to kind of go over the opening plan, if you can walk through the steps of the quick transition from one to the other and what decisions and how you arrived at the latest decision?
Yep. So, you know, we had a little bit of a contingency plan, or actually more than a little bit in the back of our minds, you know, what's going to happen if we have to close the building. You always have that contingency plan in mind. And we made the decision, you know, maybe say early afternoon on Wednesday, and my initial reaction then is always, we start getting information out as fast as possible. You can always backpedal. And as I sat with some of the administrative team, Dan, Dan is here, Dan Swisher, and others, we said, well, we, we're ready to go remote learning. We did it last year. We can deploy it. As a matter of fact, we were talking about at the meeting, let's take the first two, three days of school, get all hands on deck and deploy. So we, the original thought was we can place special ed, specialized special ed, kindergarten. We know we had room to place them. Well, as, you know, as we were able to calm a little bit, the night wore on, some of us were talking, you know, into the wee hours and then convening in the morning. You know, I'm still fairly new to the district and, you know, sometimes I don't always get the most accurate information. So I, I did not know there were 11 vacant classrooms at Marlboro. I didn't know that. I didn't, I knew there were a couple at Washington. I didn't know there were six or seven. Now, let me explain something. So in my world, school facilities world, vacant and empty are not the same thing. So let me explain that to you. So in our, and when I teach the class on school facilities, vacant means, and when, if the state would come in and evaluate, vacant means there's no class in there. There's no regular class, everyday homeroom. It doesn't mean that somebody didn't take that room over for an office to do OTPT, to put, store books or stuff. So it does not mean that those rooms were not being used for something, but those rooms were vacant and available to move where to the point where we realized we can move every class into their own classroom or in few instances, space at one of the other elementaries. And we felt the best thing to do for the fifth grade was to put them at the middle school. Because we're talking social distance, we want to make sure we can still social distance children and be true to that. And what I was, I should say, use the protocols because it's not just social distancing, it's cleaning and how close are you to someone? Is it more than 15 minutes? We talked about everything. Lunchroom, how can we stagger recess? Do we need to stagger the start and finish? In a school, you can do that pretty easily by a few minutes. And I have to tell you, I am so pleased with our administrative team. We sat there in that room almost all day and we made that, that plan. And then we, I always say, it is best for kids to be in school. That is the best place for children. And number one is safety. If it's safe, which obviously these other buildings are safe for our kids, they should be in school. And then second to that is our concern for our parents. What am I going to do with my children? You know, we just went through this. I have to work, things like that. We want to be, we're not, although that's not our primary mission, our mission is families. So... So I, I felt my, and, you know, maybe I'll backtrack a little bit, I want everybody to understand, I, I made that decision. Nobody else had, the buck stops here. So I made the decision to close the building, I made the decision, I think we have to go remote, and then I made the decision to say to parents, we still have plenty of days, we're going to put this plan in place and, and distribute our, our children. So that's pretty much how everything unfolded, and then that gets us to today.
Okay. So, so the fifth graders will be temporarily going to the middle school-
Correct.
-which isn't ideal. There was no feasible option to get them into the grade schools?
So I, I think the best, there, there's a, probably a feasible, a little bit of a feasible, I think the best option, and, and several of our districts have, their middle school is fifth, sixth, and seventh. They'll have their own seats on the bus, they'll be on the high, on the middle school schedule, but they'll have their own seats up front and things, and things like that. It's, none of it's ideal, but we, that was, I think that's the, I know, that's the best situation.
And again, this is short term. This is only for till we, this ain't the whole nine weeks. This is till we get the, for the building, the kids, that they get their, they're certainly get their education, get their social, the socialization with everyone.
Right.
And it's going to be four to, four to six weeks, maybe?
We're, we're, I'm hoping, yeah.
Right, well, close.
Maybe less.
Four to six.
Yeah, I mean, our, our goal was, like I said, I, I think as we talked about in the meeting-
Right.
-we've got multiple crews running, and we're trying to play catch up as much as we can, and again, knock on wood, and do our rain dances and whatever we have-
Right.
-to try and make sure we can get this knocked out as quickly as possible. That's our goal.
Dr. Mike, you had mentioned that after you had announced the remote learning, you received several phone calls. I mean, if you could, maybe just share that, how many phone calls you received and-
I, I have to say, a handful. I did talk with two board members with concerns. I, I, you always get some that are kind of nasty, and then you always get some, I, I don't know, just a handful. But then, that, then we also had our teachers talking to us about, this isn't ideal, this isn't the best thing, this is, so it's not like we weren't consulting, you know, people. As a matter of fact, we did ask our, we did survey, I didn't, our association surveyed our teachers, and I've asked, Dan has, did that 100% said they would prefer, or was it, they would prefer the kids to be at school rather than remote?
Thirty-six teachers responded 100% said they want to be in person, not remote. That was the question in general, what format they gave to us? Lexington teachers only, if you had a choice between in-person or remote, 88% said in-person, 12% said remote.
So our teachers are, you know, and, and we were-
I think about 90% of the Lexington teachers.
Yeah. Yeah. So. Obviously, we're in, always communicating, especially now with our association, our union, things are so much better at that group, so we're talking daily.
Good. Will, what, what was the count of days that you said that they had the 30%? And that's something we need to point out, too, that, that people don't know for the roofing portion, is when and when they can't take on projects due to insurance issues?
Yeah, I think that is a good thing to talk about, because there were a number of days that we had talked about, it was sunny, it was nice, and the roofers weren't up there. And when talking to our subcontractors, in the roofing industry, you obviously carry insurance for, in the event there's water damage, it rains unexpectedly, things like that. And the insurance companies have very strict guidelines on that, that if the projected rain is anywhere over 30%, you basically are voiding your insurance. So if you go out on a day above 30, and it does rain, they will not reimburse you, they won't cover it, that's all on your dime. So it's a big risk and liability for them. And, and again, I, I think we can all attest to, there's days that are above 30, that are clear blue skies, sunny, not a, not a cloud in the sky. So that was part of the challenge. And then again, just the amount of rain we had, I know Scott Brennan, our COO, and this isn't above 30%, this is actual wet days, where we had rain. It was, it was, I think, over 50%. And Scott, you can correct me if I'm wrong there, but for both July and August, compared to most summers, even with the material delays we had, the timeline and the schedule we had was to be complete still before start of school. And then we just kept getting hammered with rain, where we just lost week after week. And even on those days, it wasn't like the roofers just walked away, what they did is they went inside and they did what they could. But, and even some of those days where we got little bursts, they would, it could take them a few hours just to get the, you know, the roof squeegeed off and dry enough to get back to doing work. So we, it did not help us. It wasn't our friend, for sure.
I do want to ask, you made the first statement, you said the project is not behind, because-
Correct.
-October 10th is substantial completion date. So when, what was the date that you actually were able to get started on the project?
Before you answer that, I want to clarify, when I said you were behind, I didn't mean the overall project, I meant the portions that we, you know, had anticipated being done to be able to open school on time.
Yep. Yeah, and the roof is obviously the, the strictest one. You mean, as far as the date that we were able to get started on the, on the project, it was March 8th, I think, was the, was the day the contract was signed? Correct.
So is that the date that you were hoping that it would start?
We, I know in a couple of board meetings last year, because I think I was asked this question at one of the board meetings, and ideally, we were targeting November, December. And I think we were thinking January at the latest was, was kind of the, the ultimate goal. Now, when we entered into contract March 8th, I think our, our hope was that we would, we would kind of get lucky, like we did with Marlboro, where we were able to pull together equipment, contractors, all of it, and we had the same team coming back. Again, but it was, it was at a point where any minor hiccup or delay was going to, was going to bump us back, which is why we put the date of October 10th versus first day of school in there, in the contract, because, again, we kind of knew that any little issue we might have could, could push us back, which is unfortunately what we're, what we're dealing with right now.
So really, it was behind at the beginning, because you weren't able to get started when you wanted to?
Yeah, yeah, the ideal time would have, would have been January. But again, it was a lot of factors with, like we said, between the supply chain, it just, everything seemed to be working against us from day one.
Well, and I just, I guess I would like to comment that as far as the, the contract, the attorneys were working on, and the contract with the bank, those were pieces and parts, and I don't believe those were ready until, do you remember the date that those were officially-
The day they were ready, we signed, well, pretty close, yeah.
Yeah, Dr. Mike and I, I think, we're in contact pretty, pretty regularly-
Oh, yeah.
-from December all the way through, trying to get updates on exactly when we could get, and I think March 8th, I think it was, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was the lease purchase part was the-
Correct. Was the biggest, the biggest-
Yeah.
-part of that.
So there was a lot of details on that being worked out before you could be officially start, then? Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, I know our, our end and our part of the contract from PlugSmart's side was ready to go in, in December. I think the delay came down to that process on the lease purchase side.
But as far as the roofing, that started in June, correct?
At, parts of it at Washington, yes. We did not have adhesive for Lexington. So what we did is we sent the crews that were supposed to be at Lexington over to Washington, which is why Washington got done so quickly. But we were waiting until July before adhesive showed up. And again, that was just the raw material shortages we ran into here this spring.
And the adhesive was ordered months before?
Yeah, actually, actually, our subcontractor for the roof, knowing this project was coming down the pike, actually went and ordered the adhesive before it was even under contract. And had he not done that, we'd be in an even worse spot than we are right now. He had, he had started to see some of the supply chain issues, wanted to get out ahead of it. It was actually, I think, originally, and Scott can weigh in on this, too, but I think it was even originally supposed to be here in June, and then it just kept getting bumped back, like a lot of things are right now in construction. But yeah, we did get lucky.
Yeah, I could confirm that. They did, they did, they did us well by doing that order ahead of time. As Will mentioned, we, we would not be where we're at right now. I can tell you that the adhesive, their adhesive supplier was stopping orders and taking orders at the time we executed our contract. And they were not doing it because of, of supply issues and, and demand. So while we didn't have all of the adhesives at the start to be able to get us on both buildings, we had a significant jump on it. And instead of demobilizing and waiting on materials, we moved all of our efforts to Washington, where we had enough materials to keep moving on that, which is, you know, and then the, the plan to bring people from Washington to Lexington once we were complete. So I, I want to reiterate again what Will said, our roofers did, you know, they're local and they're part of your community, and they were looking out for the well-being of the district and the project as well by taking that action.
And that was greatly appreciated, and we are grateful for that. I guess if either Will or Dr. Mike, I don't know which, would answer this question, but I mean, we were hearing up until Tuesday that we would be opening schools. So if you could just go over that, is it, I mean, even if we wouldn't have had this issue with the ceiling, would, is the ceiling that's preventing us from starting, opening the building, or is it the roof not being done?
I mean, I guess I would almost say it's, it's both. You know, because we were talking on Wednesday about contingency plans and having potentially the roofer, our idea was to come in at four in the morning and do demo up until school started, and then do nothing on the roof while school was in session, and then come back in the afternoon, the minute school got out, and do, you know, lay the new roof on those sections. But one of the issues we had all talked about on Wednesday that we were openly discussing was, again, the risk of the ceiling.
Right.
You know, anything we're doing up there, there's someone walking, there's movement, when they're tearing off these roofs, especially with those foam roofs, they're scraping, that vibration alone could cause some issues, and, and a lot of our concerns, we're getting potentially air, air monitoring equipment.
Air quality, yeah, that's what we were, that's what our concern was with that meeting, was air quality. And, you know, Josh made that point, that we all just like, it's like we didn't even think about that, that time, and then when that got mentioned, it was like an eye-opener to what was safe for the kids. So we appreciate that, so.
Yeah, and then at the time, I think, in the meeting, it was brought up, options of potentially doing remote learning or other options. And then, like I said, that was kind of where we left the meeting on Wednesday, and then to, to Dr. Mike's point, it was a few hours later, the abatement contractor was on site and, and noticed all the cracking and the splintering in the, in the ceiling in the hallway there that, that needed to be abated.
Well, I, no, I was there on Monday, or when was the convocation, was it Monday?
Monday.
Monday. I had, I know, I know when I was doing groundwork, just checking things out, I talked to some, I talked to Jan, Linda was there, and, you know, she showed me that hallway, that, the one spot, and I showed Josh that spot when him and I were there on Wednesday, after we heard other stuff.
Five, six, about 3:05.
Yeah, by 3:05. And you could see the one spot. We didn't know, I don't think I really realized at that time, there, I thought it was just about that one corner. I didn't realize that whole back wall and that other section had come down. See, I, but, you know, I was still, I worked all night, so I still wasn't fully functional at that time, when that was, that was going down, so. But again, you know, there was a lot more factors that were going in and what was going on, because when we had talked and everything else, what we had assumed, everyone was going digital because of the situation, and that's all I knew going into that morning. And then when I got to, when I gave to the school that morning, after everything else, it turned into a major change, and we didn't, no one, we didn't get to talk to anyone, so, you know, but that's what Dr. Mike was here to do, that's his job. He has to make those rash decisions and when things like that, or not rash, but decisions to make when there's something emergent comes up. That's, I mean, that's the way I understand it, you know, that we hired him to do that job, so, you know, I appreciate that, I mean.
Thank you.
The project was first, when we were talking about the project, the board originally was talking about doing Washington first, and then doing Lexington in the subsequent year, and we went kind of back and forth with that, and then Dr. Mike made the suggestion to go ahead and do both buildings in the same year, mainly because how would you choose? If we want, you know, the best for all our students, we just need to do both and just get it done. And in hindsight, that seems to be good, because as supplies and materials get more and more scarce and more expensive, it seems like doing them both together overall will save the district money in the long run. And we're going to have some pretty amazing buildings once these are all done, and all of our elementary students will be well-served by the improvement in the facilities. Does Board have any questions for, in regard to the opening plan or the building projects? At this point, we'll move into the community comments, and if they ask questions that perhaps can be answered today, we'll try and answer those, specifically in regard to the buildings. Dr. Mayne, do you have?
We have one, one member, community member wanting to speak, Deborah Hatherell. Oh, we may have another one.
Deborah has one, too.
Of 14953, Sunfield Street. Deborah, would you like to, oh, you have a microphone.
That may be better.
Yeah.
Well, either way.
Do you have the microphone?
All right, all right.
Is the topic, what is the topic?
The topic is the opening plan, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay. I'm, I'm Deb Hatherell. Ben, is this on, I can't tell?
It is.
Okay, cool. Deb Hatherell, I've been here since the late 80s or late 70s, worked with the Marlington, and have put a number of kids through the school, and I'm now on grandchildren. So Washington will have three of our grandchildren over there. And we're not really concerned about the whole thing of Lexington and Marlboro coming. We understand what you're going through, and there's not an issue with that whatsoever. The issue ends up being the crowding and not being able to do the social distancing, and, and the fact that there is no mask mandate. So basically, but before I say that, okay, I want to thank you guys, because, you know, you're serving the community, you're primarily volunteers, it's 24/7 job, and I remember 24/7 jobs, as you do, too. So when you're a teacher, staff member, you know, it's 24/7, and you have to be on constantly. And basically, it's not the superintendent, it's not the, the board of the county, those aren't your bosses. Your bosses are the people that live in your community, they're the people that are in Marlington School District, so they're the parents, the retired people, the non-students, the students, you know, the preschoolers, and the whole bet. So your responsibility is huge, and I'm totally, totally aware of that. And, and your responsibility, of course, is to do the best environment for, for the children, and in the same way, be able to serve the rest of the community as well. So again, you know, the greater risk in going to the whole situation over there, and, and having more kids there. So what I'm hearing from the parents and my kids is that it's not the issue of transporting them, it's the issue of crowding them and not wearing masks. And so personal experience, we have four, we've got seven kids that are under seven, okay, grandchildren. One of them is in West Branch, and she's at our house on a regular basis. All of a sudden, she's not at her house, and mom calls and says, I've got her at the ER, she's got food poisoning, projectile vomiting, projectile diarrhea, constant. They don't know what to do. Two days later, we're back in the ER. This hasn't quit. IV fluids, okay? That's what they give her. 10 days later, she is still vomiting, and she still has projectile diarrhea. She's not with our children. Mom says she gets fired if she doesn't get a babysitter. So she's back with us. Our five-year-old, who went to Lexington Preschool, is with her for two days. She's still throwing up red, she's still getting diarrhea, she's completely lethargic, she looks like she's dying. And I say to mom, take her back to the ER. She said this is the third ER visit, this will be the fifth doctor visit. They gave her a second IV fluids. So she spent the night with us, two nights ago, she's pretty good. A week ago, this is Thursday, so a week ago yesterday, two weeks ago yesterday, our five-year-old starts with the same symptoms. We call dad and say he can't come to visit, because, you know, if this is the same thing the other one got, it's not food poisoning. He takes them anyway. So he has them, just like now, from Thursday night to Monday night. Monday night, 7 o'clock, we pick him up with the other little kid, who's now happy chappy. He is completely lethargic, he has lost, and this other little girl lost 10 pounds in 10 days. Okay? So he has lost a significant amount of weight, that you can see every rib, he can't hold up a pair of blue jeans. This is from Thursday night to Monday night. Okay? So mom takes him in immediately, he's in Akron Children's Hospital, he ends up with IV fluids, they give him all kinds of stuff going through, he's back again for a checkup. But because we knew what had happened to the first little girl, he's fine. If these kids had been in Washington, in your kindergarten class, this would have run rampant, and according to the Alliance ER, it's there. According to the southern states, this is the new COVID that is hitting children. It's gastro, and it is highly contagious. It's gastro, and it is highly contagious, and it is highly deadly. These two kids, if they had not had parents who were active and proactive, would be dead. There is absolutely no way that our grandson would have lasted another 48 hours. When he went to get out of the car on Monday night, and I knew from watching the other little girl, I was there to catch him, and he just crumpled to the ground and was completely limp.
I apologize for interrupting, but...
ER?
If you could summarize, we'll have to move to the next.
Okay, that's it. So basically, what I'm saying is, your job is to take care of these kids, and as, you know, your job is to teach these kids to be kind, to not be cruel, your job is to have a kind community. One of the ways that you can be most kind and most proactive is to make sure these kids are protected, and you don't have that particular illness that is new to the southern states and is also up here, definitely Alliance, Canton, and Akron. Beyond that, I don't know. So I'm just here to say, please mandate masks and social distancing in Washington.
Thank you. Our next speaker is James Hatter, Hatterill, 14953 Sunfield.
What's the board's present position on masks?
What's the board's present position on masks?
Does one of you want to speak?
Are we allowed to speak to that, or is that... Dr. Mike, do you want to go over the masks? I mean, I guess first of all, I think it would be good if you could just, in response to Mrs. Hatterill's information, if you could just give a brief overview of the safety and security that we have in place with moving our students around, if you go over that, and then just review the mask policy that's in place at the moment.
Okay, sure. So I think crowd is the wrong word. We're not crowding anybody, we have room there, because the building has room, so we're not crowding them. Social distance protocols have to do also with timing, how much time, and so I think crowd is the wrong word. We would not move those kids if they were on top of each other, even in normal, without COVID, because the younger they are, sometimes the more things run through. Right now, the policy that the board shows is masks are optional. They're, they're, on the bus, they're required per federal mandate.
Right, that's a, that's a state federal mandate. I don't know that I use the word crowd. We're not, we're not real concerned about, like I said, the kids being moved to the building, except for the fact that it is for people, and you would have already had things in place, and now you're adding more people, which is going to create more logistical changes.
Understand, yeah.
Which we think should be put next.
Mr. Hatterill, if you, you want to go ahead and continue?
Does the board have a position on masks yet?
Pardon me?
Does the board have a position on the mask yet?
The board voted at the last meeting to follow the recommendations of the Health Department, and, which allows to make the option, make, make masks optional.
So I don't need to state that we're going to have masks?
Well, that, that doesn't mean we're not going to have masks, they're optional, that means, that means parents and families can choose whether or not they want their kid to mask. And I think, I think after your testimony tonight, we'll probably see people masking anyway.
But I'm not sure how many people know about that, except for the kids that have actually got masks.
Well, this is being YouTube, so a lot of people are going to know now.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you, you gave a very strong testimony to that.
Pass it along, it'll go viral.
Well, what we heard tonight was, someone said, it's better to err on the side of caution for safety. The second statement was something about, well, we can't do the roof, because if it's 30% chance of rain, we can't do it. 30% chance, can't do it. So those are two things that were brought up, you know, and I think that's, pretty much says what we need to protect our, our kids, you know, and that we need to make sure we're, and I know that we're going to do, I trust Marlington in that way, but I did talk to a bus driver, not from Marlington, because we're not in school yet, and he said he's had the most kids on his bus ever, 61 kids on one bus. And he said, he's opened up every window, because he can do that, and vents and everything else, but 61 kids on one bus. That's not social distancing at all. So, it's a different school district, but, you know...
And, and that school district, basically, some of the parents complained, because the kids were masked on the bus, and then they complained that they hadn't had to wear their mask all day long, and so the bus drivers were having issues. And so, and they just basically changed the mandate and said mask all day. And a lot of the ones locally have changed. So I'd hate to see our statistics go crazy with kids quarantined and sick, because we weren't proactive.
That's it.
That's it.
Thank you very much, and just, I guess I would like to say that I think the board and the superintendent will constantly be reevaluating the stand, you know, you know, the mask situation as we go through the process, because it seems like a lot of things are changing on a rapid basis. So I appreciate your input. Patty, are there, do we have any more public comments?
Those are the only two.
Thank you. Is there any additional board discussion on any of the topics that were brought up this evening?
Yeah, I think we need to discuss the mask position. I think the, it's, it's clear, we're seeing, we are an advantage that other school districts did not have.
Dr. Mason, masks weren't actu, excuse me for a moment, but masks weren't actually put on the agenda as a topic for board discussion, I mean, if you can...
You just said on anything we just discussed, anything that just came up.
Well, that's on the, well, excuse me, then, on the agenda, we can add it to...
The meeting was asked for, based on a, on a email that said mask mandate, and you even commented on it, that if anybody wants anything other than the mask mandate, they have to tell you. So this meeting was asked for about the mask mandate.
Well, as it was responded to in an email, Dr. Mason, that was an old thread that got responded to, it was not announced as a mask mandate. Patty, could you let us know if that is a topic that we would be able to discuss tonight in the realm of what you had announced?
Opening plans, opening plans for the school year, that is, that is what this is on.
Do you think we could include it under...
Opening plan, yeah, I believe we could discuss.
Okay, thank you very much, okay.
I think we know where, where we stand then on that. I mean, I, certainly, I'm not willing, I mean, I guess my question is, and I think the Heatherles deserve this response, is what's an acceptable rate of illness among our children? What is it?
Or death.
Well, I want, just, let's just stick with, what's an acceptable infection rate? Because if we're not doing everything we can to keep that from happening...
If, if that's, if that's the argument, then we shouldn't have in-person learning at all.
Well, then if, if that's the argument, then, then we shouldn't, but we're going to, because that's, you're balancing things, this is an obvious one. How, Dr. Mike, how many, how many school districts in this, in the county?
Almost has it. So if you go by the paper, and if they were telling the truth at our meeting, there are only, there are all in Stark, except Lake, Fairless, Tuslaw, North Canton, and Marlington are not mandating masks, as far as I know.
Before we delve into this, do we want to give an option, you know, do, do we need the Plug Smart guys to be hanging around?
Oh, no.
That way they're not, we're not taking up their time.
I didn't think of that, thanks.
You guys are welcome to hang up, or listen in.
Scott, thank you for coming, by the way.
Thanks.
Everything going on in your life, you, you went above and beyond for us here, thank you very much.
Yep, good luck to you.
Thank you for sharing, everyone.
All right, thank you, too.
Thanks.
Thanks.
What's that?
I forgot they were there.
All right.
It's a test.
All right, oh, I found the button.
I haven't had my...
All right, so you guys are going to hang on, or you could hang up?
They disconnected.
They disconnected, okay, it's still showing, it's connected.
Okay.
Okay, there we go. Sorry about that.
You wanted the, the list again, so if, if, because I'm hesitant, because in the past, we went around the room at the superintendent meeting, and then it wasn't accurate, but if, if it's accurate in the thread that I got, so, so Lake, Fairless, Tuslaw, North Canton, and Marlington are the five that masks are optional.
And nowhere does that say that, it says, don't wear them, it's saying, it's, it's optional. I mean, this is where I wrestle with this, Dr. Mason, I'm, you know, me being a nurse, this is my, this is my conundrum that I live in every day. I can't speak for every medical professional, but I know that, I have patients, I can't even get them to take their medicines, and I have people that want to leave the hospital at a, at a heartbeat, you know, and I cannot force them to do what they don't want to do with their body. I mean, I, I am ethically torn about all this, because the safety of kids, that we're in, where I'm now at, as a position to save, for the safety of children. At the same time, I can't, I can't tell a person, even though I want, you know, I can tell them all I want and suggest, I can't control what they do, and it's so hard for me in that environment, and, because all I do is take my job so I can care for people. And when you can, you can tell a person, you need to take this medication, and they just look at you like, no, and it could prolong their life for another six months, and they're like, nope, I, I can't, I can't make that happen, and I, and that hurts when you find out things that happened, like this couple here, you know, I'm not saying it's right, I'm saying, it's just hard for me ethically as a nurse to do that, and there's nurses that are going to say that, they're going to come out the opposite, it's, I can't say it's wrong or whatever, and, and I feel for you guys, I work with childrens, I know it's hard to watch a kid and do that, it's not fun, it's not fun at all. So it's, I just want people to know, you know, it's just, that's, it's just a difficult situation we're all in, and we're all in a different boat, because we all have different things that are making this come, come true. I'm going to have my kids wear masks, I'm telling you all now, my kids are wearing a mask. That's my choice and my family's choice, and as a nurse, that was part of the reason why we went remote last year, we had all, COVID was everywhere, and my wife and I's concern was, what if we brought it home and sent it to the school? I was very fortunate that digital learning was there, I know no one wants to have this digital learning thing, and it's, you know, and to me, I felt digital learning sounded fine, you know, but my kids suffered from not being with other kids, you know. I did talk to administrators too, about, you know, how the groups' class were going to set up, and they're not going to be on top of each other. I appreciate that, thank you that we had those, we fortunate, it's, it's fortunate that we have three buildings, it's, it's also fortunate that two buildings can house the whole district, and multiple times throughout the whole history of Marlington, that we were able to do something, and it's just short-term, then we can get back to getting people's social distance out, but again, I just can't see forcing someone doing something they can't, because then if I'm pushing something on them, then I'm potentially causing harm on somebody. And I know, for, for me, I'm going to wear a mask, I mean, I don't wear a mask right here, because I'm, I'm also two, three feet from you, I'm, you guys put me in the back corner over here, I'm okay with that, that's where I sit at home, but again, you know, it's just, and no joking aside, it's just, it's very hard, and I, I wrestle with this every day, you know, I had a patient the other day, just kept telling me, I'm going home. I said, just give me one more, give me 24 hours, I can get you some help, and get you the, the okay to get therapy, and get you your, everything you need, and he's like, I'm out, man, I'm done. And not, not even, and I'm not, not even 24 hours, he was back in the ER. I mean, and that's the, that's the issue that we all want, and I'm all about kids' safety, I am beyond kids' safety, then you could, I mean, I worry about that every day, and I'm wrestling with this on a daily basis, when all this has been going on. So I, I feel your pain, and I, you know, that you, you're worried about these things, and these are concerns that haunt us every day. It's not like it's a, it's a thing that I take lightly, I, this is very serious.
Just an aside, that our five-year-old was in your preschool at Lexington, did an excellent job, phenomenal preschool, they wore masks, fuss all day, fuss. No big deal. No big deal.
And my kids, my kids had a mask on, we go to church now, my kids go, mask when they go Walmart.
Or, or do we want to reopen this to additional public comments?
I'm, I'm okay with that, are you okay with that, anyone else?
Are all the board members, okay?
That's what this is about.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Gabriel.
I must be the, one of the older people here, but I remember polio. Both my mom and dad were from Cleveland, my grandparents still live in Cleveland on St. Clair, and where Old Lee Park was. I remember my mom would not let us, not let us visit my grandparents, she didn't want us going to Cleveland and getting polio. We couldn't even eat apples off our own apple tree, if I, my mom washed them. So one day, I'm in school, we ended up going to school, next thing I know, we're getting vaccinated against polio. Everybody in that school, all the kids, no choice, get vaccinated. I remember that, and I remember when the sugar cubes came out, we had to do it again. And I know everyone here knows George Washington, right? They know about Valley Forge, right? George Washington, and all that suffering those soldiers went through, starvation, no shoes, no clothes, no nothing, and not knowing what was going to happen the following day, mandated that each one of those guys get vaccinated against smallpox. He did this at Valley Forge, where these guys were dying, you know, and all we're asking is let's protect the kids the best we can right now.
I mean, I, I would say, we have dress codes, we tell kids how they can, can't dress, we certainly mishold here, how, how many problems did you have with masks last year in your classroom?
We didn't have any problems with any kids wearing them, and I thought they were all good with it. At the end of the year, when it was so hot that we were allowed to take them off, we had kids with headaches and things from the heat, they were super excited, I didn't realize how excited they would be to take them off. So I can see both ends of it, and you've got to do something, if you decide to mandate masks, you have got to do something besides one stinking fan on the corner during this hot weather, you've got to. Don't you all get air conditioning? No, we don't.
It's on its way. It's on its way, hopefully.
That project's underway.
Very soon.
It's not, you know, it's not a laughable matter either, it's horrible when it's 80 or 90 degrees on the second floor, but horrible.
Yes, go ahead, if you could state your name.
My name is Jenny Mish. So my questions are, who is going to enforce this mask mandate? As we know, children like to break rules, so is it going to be the teacher's responsibility to, and, you know, stop class and say, put your mask on, so-and-so? The bus driver, if the kids aren't compliant, what's he going to do, pull over, have these kids? There's so much complexity to, to this, and I agree, I'm a nurse too, I see what's going on in Alliance Hospital. It, we're in a pandemic, we're still in a pandemic, and it's just going to continue and cross-breed, just like flu does. But like, who, is there going to be designated people to enforce this? And then also, numbers are going to be higher right now, of course, because everything's, you know, breeding and getting new things now, is it a possibility that if we mandate it now, can we unmandate it in six months? Or if we don't mandate it now, and in six months, if this is 100 times worse, should we mandate it? Like, can it be reevaluated? So that's always an option.
That's going to be ongoing, for sure.
I know, in different states, I have a friend in Missouri who said her county is doing percentages, I don't know how they figure that, if that's a possibility for us, but if their COVID-positive students are at a certain percent, then they are going to mandate. I, I don't know if that's an option, but that's an idea.
Yeah, and Alliance went second day to change their mask rules. It took them one day.
To finish your point, you're always going to have kids that won't wear a mask, and, and you basically, you're just going to have to go with it periodically, because you're always going to have somebody that's going to be like this, you know, we're going to put it on the forehead, and it's going to be, maybe the, the kids' other kids saying, hey, I don't want to get sick, put your mask on, who knows?
So that, that's basically saying that they're making that decision? Do you see what I mean? If we mandate it, it's still going to be an optional thing, because the kids aren't going to, a lot of kids aren't going to follow the rules.
I think if you mandated, at least what we saw last year, was everybody just wore their mask, that, that cared about that, and you had a few people that absolutely refused to do it, or were obnoxious, you're always going to have that, it's something, it's something we can't stop. So as far as who's in charge of it...
Just to point out... Just to point out, the article the Alliance review put out, I think it was the one where they were citing that the K through five at Alliance was going back to school with masks. Right underneath the article, they had a picture of a child with the mask below their nose. And I just, yeah, like you said, I, I don't see how you're going to monitor and to get, you know, the efficacy out of it. I, you know, I'd like to see data on, on schools that had a certain number of COVID-positive cases, implemented masking in the same period of time afterwards. Did it reduce significantly the amount of COVID? And, and a lot of the cases aren't necessarily from spread in the school. Those people that are diagnosed are counting, and that count can get it from family or, you know, anywhere.
Exactly. But, but do be aware that children did not get COVID because they were not in contact with people who had COVID. They were home-based. We had quarantine because of a pandemic. So, when they say that children don't get it, and that's kind of what you're applying a little bit, it might not be from, you know, the kids at school, it could be from somewhere else. We were in a pandemic, and they were away from other children. So, they didn't get the flu. They didn't get emphysema. They, they didn't get the round rash and garbage. You know, they didn't get it, because they weren't with other kids. They didn't get lice, because they weren't with other kids. Boom, next week, they will all be with other kids. So, not only do we have lice and everything else to deal with, now we also have whatever strain of COVID is going to be out there. We can't protect them all from, you know, all the other things, but this is one place where we can potentially diminish the amount that get it.
Yes, and I think it's important to reiterate, the board and our administrative team will continue to reevaluate the situation as we go through the process and as, you know, as necessary, we'll be, you know, we'll be discussing it further and making any changes that the board decides to change, or the superintendent assists with that. I mean, the difficult part for me is even with, if masks, for example, would be mandated in elementary school, then you go to football games or social events and, or the store, and you see next to no one wearing masks. So, it, even if we can protect the children all day long.
We did it last year.
They still are able to be exposed from another source. So, it's, it's very complicated and.
But you're not responsible for that other source. You personally are responsible for every moment they are in your custody, care, and control as a school board member.
Right, and that's why we have, if the parents, if the parents feel strongly about the masks, these, their children should be coming to school in masks, and the parents have to be working with their children, their grandchildren.
This is also not only the board's choice, this is the family's choice. We don't get to take that away from family members. The, the government did it last year, we're a school board. I, I don't feel that that is the role of the school board to do so.
He, he basically said the government took away rights last year, and as a.
Well, they mandated, they mandated the masks. They took away the freedom of choice for individuals.
I think Texas did that for a while.
Yeah. Let's have to go there.
So, we'll take one more question or comment on masks, and then.
Florida did it well, too.
This should not be a discussion between one teacher and three parents. I mean, you know, you guys have your discussion, and when, when it's us discussing with you, it should be the community. Like this is probably not.
It's not ideal, I agree.
So, what, what were you going to say, though? I'm sorry.
No, that's all I wanted to say, is I, and I think we're getting into more of what should be a community discussion than us.
It does have to be here.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, that's.
Okay, does the board have any other comments on the masks, the opening plan, or building projects?
Just one more. I have 18 to 22-year-olds in class. I don't have a mask problem getting them to wear masks. No, we could say, I mean, I think there's probably worse age levels, middle school would probably fit, I think, but, you know, masks work. We stayed in school here last year. You know, less than 4% of the state of Virginia's children, and that's not that far away from us, went to school at all last year in person. We were able to do things that no one, many, most states couldn't do with, with extracurriculars. I had a senior last year, and it was, it was going to be a nightmare if we went through the spring of 2020 with her. But we were able to do those things, and it was, part of it was masks, part of it was the careful, part of it is, is our staff and their willingness to do things, go above and beyond. You know, we don't know how many times a teacher washes the desks off. And we think, oh, well, that's, that's the custodian. No, in, in my classroom, I spray all the desks off after every time I have class for the next class to come in. And we're given that. So, so I, I think we need to be very careful on this, doing everything we can to make it safe. And I feel, because it's, it is, it the, you know, okay, it's a choice, but if a kid with COVID sneezes on someone with COVID, teacher or otherwise, it, you know, we know how viruses are transmitted. Those droplets, they get in your eyes. It, cold, cold viruses are transmitted through the droplets.
Same way.
The exact same way, you know, and that's, I just, I'm just, I, I have a problem rolling the dice and with the children's health. I, I just do. And I, I can't, I can't not say that when we do this. I, I think we have to think about that.
I think what I'm hearing, though, is, again, it's, is to give people the ability to choose, is we're not saying you cannot wear a mask. We're just saying you can if you want, and you don't have to if you don't want to. So, I mean, to me, that's the ultimate, I think that's the best, I think that's the best scenario, because then everybody can do what they feel, you know, and if you want to say personally, because you feel that way, like that, you know, like, hey, everybody, I really strongly recommend you wear a mask, and, and this is why. I mean, you would probably have a lot of people saying, yeah, you're right, I'm going to, even just, you know, because they know you and your integrity. And, I mean, that's fine, but, you know, I, I have to agree, I think that it, we shouldn't have, force a choice.
Thank you. Okay.
Wait, you don't ask my child. Do you want to do that? I say you wear the mask.
Parents can do that.
I'm not a parent.
Parent can do that. Yes.
That's, that's no right for the child. That's why I say, wear the mask. And they do it.
Child's different.
And why am I wearing this mask? Protect you, not me. This mask protects you from getting me sneezing on you. But you're not doing it for me, are you?
So, but I want you to look at what COVID did. My husband will die because we got COVID, because a politician opted not to let the country know that there was COVID on coastlines. Okay? So, my husband will die because of that, because one man was arrogant enough to not let the country know that there was COVID. Okay? And the other thing is, I'd like to know what our rights are now for homeschooling after this coordinating, to take our kids out of this school district, and for virtual learning.
Okay, Dr. Mike, after the meeting, if maybe you could follow up with them and, on any additional concerns they may have.
And also.
Thank you.
How to stop paying taxes.
I'm, I don't.
I think everybody wants to know that one.
And if you're not going to protect my children, then I will not pay taxes for Marlington School District. And as he said, we have been staunch, staunch supporters of your school system. And that will stop.
Thank you. We, we do appreciate your support. And again, Dr. Mike, if you could follow up with the Heatherells after, you know, scheduled time to meet with them, sit down and talk to them. The board would appreciate that. And I want to thank everyone for attending and sharing your views, and thank the board for the meeting. And is there motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the rule.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Mish?
Yes.
Group 5-0.
Thank you very much.